I'm gonna turn everything over to them. They know what they're doing, and I really don't. So we appreciate your being here, and that's amazing for joining us.
Welcome to everybody, both in person and around Zoom. I hope you can hear us on Zoom. Because we're not live, so I don't know if it's loud enough. We can talk in all the different directions below. My name is Barbara Felpina, and I'm here with Phillipa Tanner, and we're going to serve as moderators for tonight's program. Now, elections are the better off of democracy, and voting gives you a voice in our community. And as Helene said, District Seven, only is now our up-county area is actually going to be represented by someone who knows this area. As opposed to being the edge of somebody else's. And tonight's program, I hope, will give everyone an opportunity to know about the two candidates running to represent District Seven on the county council. But before we get started, I want to give a tiny bit of background. A referendum passed in 2020, giving the increase in the Montgomery County Council's 11 members to be 59. So there'll be seven districts and four at-large seats. Now, District Seven is an area from Route 28 to Ednour, all the way from Howard County, west to Durwood, touch of Montgomeryville, and just all the way up to the Howard County line. So in Sandy Spring, after Brighton, Brooksville, Holley, Durwood, Ocean, Ladysville, Danaskis, Little Parks, Montgomeryville, and Mount Harris. Now, in choosing questions tonight, we wanted to push this into context. Because there are first things that the county council has to go over, and other things that they don't. And so I wanted to preview the role of the county council for those questions that we ask in contests. The council sets the tax rate required to fund the capital and operating budget, the money, and things like that. They approve all the land, plan, land use plans, the Thrive 2050, the local master plan. They also approve the solid waste and water sewer plan. What properties get water sewer, what stay on septic, they didn't even tell here when we act. They act on the zoning change. They exercise oversight of county programs. They service the board of health for Montgomery County. And they confirm appointments made by the county executive, then appoints members to places like the planning board, board of the P S. So that is what their role as council members, and that's what their area of power is. Tonight's program was put together by the Greater Alling Civic Association, known as G O C. G O C formed over 40 years ago to oversee the implementation of the 1980s master plan. G O C is all volunteer, any detective state every month, you're welcome to come back. Now you know where the brick is, you can come back. And essentially, G O C serves as the liaison between the community and our elected officials and county agencies, the government agencies, that the federal, state, and local lack. And we try very hard as organizations to be a voice our concerns in a very reasoned and researched way, and not to say we don't like this. We say, hey, this has been done in kind of concept, but how about trying this? Try to be very reasonable in our request. For tonight's program being recorded, I assume it will be posted on the G O C website, you've got cameras, got Zoom. And we really would like to thank all of you for coming, as well as agents, assistant librarians, for providing us this space to meet. So we're gonna start with opening statements. And each candidate, in that way, can introduce themselves. And then they will be asked several of the same questions. Both of them will have the same questions to answer, and then they'll be asked questions unique to them. And we will start with the introductions, and the first will be Ms. Lukey.
Hi, thank you for having us, and thanks to Kaden for the space tonight, I really appreciate it. And I am Dawn Lukey, and just gonna give you some background, and it's gonna sound like a biography, but I figured that's the easiest way to tackle it. So I have been in Maryland for 25 years. But my origin story is in southern New Jersey, in a very collar town between Philadelphia and Atlantic City. Exit 38 off the Atlantic City Expressway, for those who like to ask that question about the state of New Jersey. I was adopted when I was a month old by my parents, who are now in their 80s. And I'm living life in the sandwich generation with my four children. And I grew up in this very collar town where a lot of my family owned small businesses on Arne Street. So my mom and dad, and my grandparents owned our local auto parts store and car repair shop. My uncle, great uncle, owned the appliance store, and my great-grandfather built our movie theater. All of those businesses shuttered in the 1980s at various times when big-box stores came to life, and sort of Main Street businesses, if we're, came to And I ended up as a first-generation college student at the University of Pennsylvania, where I majored in English and minored in theater arts, knowing that I wanted to go on to law school. And I ended up becoming my class president at Penn, despite being a first-gen college student, maybe a little different background than a lot of the other folks that I knew in school. And I took a year between college and law school to work up in Boston for the tobacco products liability project. With T P L P, doing public health, public interest work related to the big changes that happened in the late 90s related to tobacco sales, cigarette sales, and, you know, had it been now, that would also include bacon and those sorts of devices. Working collaboratively with the legislature and working with policymakers and attorneys general from across the state. And when I came to Maryland to go to law school in Baltimore, University of Maryland, I obtained a certification in health law. And I went into private practice for a while. I worked in corporate practice. I then joined the practice of the Office of the Attorney General, where my current responsibilities included serving as primary counsel, or only counsel, to the Maryland Center for Safety, the State's Longitudinal Data System Center, the State's Act of Asail and interdisciplinary work group. And I'm on loan to the Maryland Department of Emergency Management, the Maryland Institute of Emergency Medical Systems Services. And I serve on a bunch of different boards or commissions, and providing advice and policy knowledge in the areas of mental and behavioral health and public safety. Thank you. Ms. Malnado, your turn.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming, and thank you for the G O C organization to set this up. It's about time you guys did this. I've been waiting for six months. Anyway, thank you. I'll come to you as a first generation Hispanic American. My family and I came to this country from Bolivia in the 1980s, speaking the American dream. And I'm glad to tell you guys today that we reached the American dream. But I see it falling and basically facing out of existence. I'm the first one to graduate from college in my family. I obtained an economics degree from Catholic University. I have a master's in economic development. And because of the education I got in the Norman County Public Schools, I was able to go to college and amass over 25 years of professional experience, both private and public sectors. As, you know, I told you about the American dream. So this kid that came from Bolivia was briefing at the White House, State Department, and Treasury Department, advising the US government on how to best direct US policies to save tax dollars for Americans. So I've done my duty as an American. I love this country. I love this state, Maryland, and I love this county. That's why I'm running. Why am I running? Basically, because the council has lost its credibility and its compromise. The county, the county council ignores parents, students, teachers, business owners. And I'm afraid that the council is bought and paid for by Big Pharma, big tech, big corporations. What is my platform? There are a lot of issues in the county, but I'll focus on three. The economy. I want to fix the economy by fixing the investment environment in the county. How do we do that? By focusing our development in small and medium-sized businesses.
Okay.
Well, public safety. We have a lot of problems with, with crime rising all over the county. I backed the blue 100%. I want to provide all the resources for the police to do their jobs, because none of our streets are safe anymore. I want to remove all the obstacles that hinder police departments to do their job, which is to protect the residents of the county. In terms of education, I want to bring back the pledge of allegiance for all schools. I want to bring back the discussion between parents and teachers, and have them be involved in decision-making education for our kids. I want to remove gender and CRT education from our, from our school systems that is then damaging our children at a very early age. And also, I want to return the education to the course topics, math, reading, science, and civics. Follow me at harromaldonado.com. Thank you very much. Let's get our kind of back.
Alright, thank you very much for those introductions. I know you're working hard on doing this, so just watch to see if anybody unmutes on Zoom. That way you don't interrupt any of the speakers talking. Now, we're gonna ask some shared questions, meaning I'm gonna ask one question, then you will go at, answer the same question with the same terms. I'll announce who's gonna answer the first each time. So the first question is going to be, as the county's population grows, people need place at the lips. Planners focus new housing primarily near transit hubs. Other than Shady Grove Metro Station, which is on the very edge of District Seven, where do you see areas inside our district as encourage for a new transit hubs? Mr. Malnado, you go first with three minutes.
Thank you. So the underlying assumption on your question, basically saying that population is growing in our county, is wrong. According to the latest data that we have available, there was a 1% decrease in the population in the county from 2020 to 2021. People are leaving the county, and businesses are leaving the county. Why are people leaving the county? Because there are they don't agree, and they don't want to live in a county where there is a lot of progressiveness and wokeness in the public schools, in the businesses. So that's why they're leaving. And this causes a brain drain in our county. So the best and brightest are leaving the county, and I've seen this in developing countries. I've seen this as a major factor for the decline in their societies, in their economy, in their institutions. They leave their, they leave their, their home, and they leave a big gap. And also, businesses are leaving. Why are they leaving? Because the investment environment in the county is not conducive to them be profitable in the county. Not in terms of populations, I mean, why would you ask that question if the population is decreasing? The county and District Seven especially. I talked about this in Camp Henshaw. Many people want to keep the way that, you know, they have their homes, their businesses in the district, and they don't want that quality of life to change. So bring in, bring in a new transportation hub that will need to be discussed with the stakeholders within the district. City mayors and organizations like yourselves in all of the district. For example, take, you know, the bike lanes. They take away one-third of the roads, and they cause more harm than good. People move to the district for one reason, to live in open areas, green areas, farm areas. And this increasing transportation or increasing or creating transportation hub would in fact challenge that quality of life. So we need to reassess, you know, the, the common theme in that mindset in the county where every question I get asked on the questionnaires, we expect population to grow. It's not growing. It's not growing. So the question itself, it's wrong, and we need to refocus our attention into what would a transportation hub mean for politicians? Sorry. And I point you to Shady Grove Road. There was, there were far areas around that station in front and from the metro station. Now it's not there anymore.
Right. Thank you. This will be the level you're getting off. No, I'm good. Thank you so much. So, you know, regardless of whether the population is or isn't growing, populations are adapting, right? And so I think that's something that we need to take into consideration when we're thinking about transit. What is working, what isn't working, what might be needed, and how that should go in the future. So I know you focused, or mentioned Shady Grove, which is in the southern part of the district. And certainly, there's been a lot of development around there, and the way that the master plans are organized presently for the county anticipate increasing housing density around existing transit hubs. And certainly, when you think of a metro station, particularly about an existing transit hub. Building new metro stations of county is not something that is really in the cards, or it is so costly and so expensive that that's not really something that, that the county council has been focused on, where that is pretty imaginable in any significant, you know, timeframe, you know, that I would be serving. But I do think it's important to think about what we already have, and is that working or is it not working? So for example, before I came, I checked to see how long would it take to get on the bus from Sherwood High School to Sandy Spring Adventure Park, right? Because kids wanted it to be adventure park, it's gonna be fun, right? Ties local businesses, what are you doing? In a car, it takes seven minutes. On the bus and the walking, it would take about 25, right? And buses wouldn't run, and so on and so forth. So what would work for our community here in Holley, if you're thinking just about Holley, to make it work? Is it a shuttle loop that runs around and goes to the town center and touches other points? Does it run in certain times, things of that nature? So now I was talking about a subway, and now I was talking about higher-speed transit. But what helps better functionality? And think about our kids too. If you're talking about getting to internships, internship programs, things of that nature, you have to have a way to get them there, because mom and dad can't always meet in Uber, right? And I have four kids, and they are 15, 14 and a half, 13, and almost 11. And so everybody has to go to a lot of different places and have a lot of different things on their plate, right? But if you can have the ability to know that they can shuttle from O B G C over to the town center, and then, you know, later you're gonna get them, and maybe we're all having dinner. Well, then you're tying in our local businesses, our relegation, and transit, and using them together in a positive way. I wanted to point out that there is currently a study going on called Ride On Reimagine. It's already been in progress, and then it will, in, I believe it's supposed to start in January of 2023, where the public comment and feedback period will commence for, again, for residents to talk about what works and what isn't working in their areas with respect to ride-on service and how to make a part of it. Alright, thank you. I just forgot to start the timer previously, so.
No worries. Thank you both. So our next question has to do with finding an area. So currently, there is a perceived increase of theft crime in District Seven. Often, we'll see like on different community forums, like Nextdoor, different ring camera activities with packages being stolen, cars being broken into, door handles being shaken, or even carpet itself. So there's a wide spectrum of reactions to address those crimes. So on one hand, we would have police officers on every corner, every street, all the time. Every criminal would be locked up right away. On the other hand, on the other head of the spectrum, and that place would be more reactive after the crime has been committed, and then they'll come and do what they need to do. So beforehand, provides better service so that a person doesn't feel that they need to steal on first place. So like this could involve substance abuse treatments being available, fair wages, or quality education and official programs. So that's setting up the question, so different end of the spectrum. So as a council member, your influence is in funding. And it's funding those different county departments and different programs that can be put in. So that's where you see yourself in the spectrum in regards to theft crime. So Ms. Lukey, you go first this time.
Sure. So there is an uptick in what you're calling theft crime, or what I call crimes of opportunity. Because unfortunately, if you notice, the nextdoor.com, the videos, it's, you know, I'm checking the door, is it open, is it unlocked, whatever? They go in, they rummage around, you know, some will be more aggressive and break the window or something like that, and we're to access the contents of the neighborhood to collect valuables and sites. And what kinds of stuff to tell people at the holiday season, please don't leave your purchases inside the bar. You know, I also work intensely in public safety and criminal justice, how to be issued
Um, yeah, I I also have worked intensely in public safety and 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 criminal justice um, policy issues and they shouldn't be here and here. They should be functioning parallel, right? Um, we don't have the capacity because officers don't grow on crease. Uh, although around twenty eighteen, when we were working on the Sage to Learn Act given for the state. We had about ten percent vacancy in our law enforcement department statewide. That was the average. Um, MCPB is now at eight percent, so we're under that where we were four years ago. Um, for example, the state police says they can rent much, much higher. Um, and it's not a good use of time or service to have somebody posted on every corner. That's not going to happen. But it's not to say that there shouldn't be consequences for the actions that are taken. They absolutely should be. Um, but you also should be working on crime prevention and community policing model is the most effective way to stay engaged and stay in touch with the community. Following to see something, say something, or something looks a little off the filter and you report it. Because they you don't know how many other people are reporting the same thing. And then the you just the non emergency line and then people do know that that is a concern. Law enforcement can be responsive to that. So the more information and the more back and forth you can have between your law enforcement professionals and your community, the better off things go. Um, with respect to especially in the juvenile cases um, with diversion programs or in the mental and behavioral health context, when you have diversion programs for that as well. That is another thing that's already existing here in the county and expanding more. Um, in order to serve that service particularly in the behavioral health context, I mean, those individuals who might be going down at that moment. That instant where they're choosing whether they're going to criminal prosecution or whether they're going into treatment can be that moment that makes the life change for that person. And it doesn't mean there's not restitution or there there's not, um, you know, again uh, an outcome for the victim of whatever had happened. But you're also dealing with the individual who committed the crime or attempted to commit the crime to make sure that that does not, that behavior does not occur again.
Alright, enjoy your, the question is.
No, sorry. So um, good question, but again, I have uh, issues with the question. You you mentioned that perceived increase. Um, there's no perceived increase. There's a, there's a total increase in crime levels all over the county. This is from October fifth, Montgomery County Crime Data. Human trafficking increased through uh, June of this year, uh, from last year by six hundred percent. Uh, robbery, carjackings increased to nineteen percent uh, through September fifteenth of this year. Robbery commercial increased by seventy percent. Robbery homes, private homes increased by twenty percent. Sex offenses increased by an average of uh, fifty percent uh, from last year. Weapons uh, often offenses, crimes, nine percent. So when you say there's a perceived uh, notion that the crime is increasing, this is incorrect. Crime is rapid in the county, especially um, in our uh, southern part of the of our district. That means Montgomery County, Montgomery Village, there with Redland, all of them. So um, why does this happen? Because the 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 party in charge of the council has decreased funding for the police. And this is not by mistake. And they're doing this in order for for them to get more power. And crime is going to spread like wildfire from now on because that's what they want. What do you expect when you defund the police? You you basically asking the police to do their jobs with their hands behind tight, tight behind their backs. Um, I'm against that. Um, and I've talked to police officers, officers in the campaign trail. Um, I went to different events, Montgomery Village, all the different parts of our district. They're concerned. They're concerned morale as well. They they can't do their jobs. They're they lack funding. They lack um, resources. And they have legal, legal obstacles created by the state of attorney, attorney's office where they basically protect criminals and and punish police officers. So um, my platform, I'm going to change it all. I'm going to back the blue hundred percent. I'm going to uh, increase the the budget of the the police so they can have the resources. And right now, we have a hundred and eight vacancies in Montgomery County Police. And actually talking to the police officers this weekend in in Montgomery Village. The actual number is one twenty five. So this should concern every resident in this McSudden. We need to change this. We need to fix this. And I want to do this. Thank you.
Okay, the third question, dealing with roads. So the roads in a large portion of District Seven are one lane, meaning one one lane each direction in rural north. It's the, it contributes to the well care of the area. However, this completely leads to congestion as we know. For example, in the morning rush hour, the backup on South and Georgia Avenue in Sunshine is on my so all the way up to Howard County. So how do you plan to balance moving vehicles and maintaining the care of the community? Uh, Mr. Maldonado, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't have any problem with that question. Um, it's a very complex issue. I think the best way to to handle that um, that issue is to directly talk and discuss the issue with stakeholders and communities. The the city mayors, the people who live in the communities actually know what their problem is. Adding another lane to a one lane road could solve a problem. Uh, creating new roads could solve a problem, but we need to talk to the stakeholders directly. So they want, and when I come um, when I went in November, I want to address this issue by uh, talking to the stakeholders. Talking to them and within nine days come up with a sensible plan in order for us to uh, address the transportation issue. The the bottlenecks that we know exist in there in all over District Seven. So that's my plan. I know it's not uh, what we want to be hearing. I guess we wanted to hear here's plan A and B and C, but it's very complex and we can't uh, provide you with both with all sorts in terms of uh, providing you with with, you know, alternative uh, solutions that may or may not be feasible. So again, as an economist, I want to make sure that everything is analyzed with cost and benefit analysis. And that goes back to all the expenditures in the county as well. So, uh, when we do that, um, first, the first day I'm in the office, I want to commission a full audit of of the county um, finances in order for us to find the resources, in order for us to redirect resources to address issues like this one, transportation roads.
Alright, Ms. Luki, how do you plan to balance this congestion issue and maintaining the character of the community?
Yeah, this is definitely something that's been increasing over time, like, you know, just even over the past decade. It's gotten a lot worse than 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 the ten years prior to that. Um, and there's a lot of different reasons for that. Housing costs are a huge part of it. Um, and particularly the communities to the north of us have a lot of folks who are commuting down into D C V into the southern part of our community where, or um, you know, across in even all the way to Virginia. Um, some of them come and they park and ride from Shady Grove. And that's the closest metro to any, you know, to Frederick County, to Carroll County, and to Western Howard County. So this is not really just a Montgomery County problem. This is a problem that requires a comprehensive solution that also brings in our stakeholders in Western Howard County, in Carroll County, Frederick County. Um, I've been stuck in that, that piece of Georgia Avenue of various types. Someone knows that, which I don't know. Uh, but we also need to think about this in terms of what can we do locally, just purely locally. Um, versus what's going to require our collaboration with our state, state and federal stakeholders. Uh, because different roads um, intersect with other roads that are not controlled by the Um, and so if you need to take a look over time and assess the traffic patterns, try changes in traffic patterns. What is or isn't going on, especially like savings time, which I wish to get rid of. Um, always seems to impact traffic flow and traffic safety every, every year. What can we do to adjust the signaling that's happening? Is that an issue? Should it be adapted to um, to float differently in order to not have bottlenecks when the majority of the traffic on those one lane direction roads are heading in one direction at one time of the day and a different direction, different time of day. Um, so those are some of the more nuts and bolts practical things that I would be looking at in that sense. Um, but you know, the 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 other piece of this is incredibly important is those state and federal partnerships and knowing you can pick up the phone. Our district, District Seven, covers four different state legislative districts. Four multiple Congressmen. Right? So for me, knowing that I have the ability to pick up the phone or send a text message to any of them at any time because I already have those established relationships, is how you bring home practical solutions that benefit your local community. And of course, taking into consideration the state provision of the community and what their perceptions are. Studying them and then taking all that uh, into a tally to make sure you're coming up with a practical, pragmatic solution.
Thank you. Today's one question is about kind of drive twenty um, twenty fifty. Uh, one of the committee, community issues with July twenty fifty of allowing duplexes and triplexes in zones currently in the state of Alabama. If there was a large parcel ready to develop in District Seven, what would your ideal hypothetical community look like? And Ms. Luki, you go first this time.
Yep, uh, thanks for sending this question in my line, shuffling around with gears.
This be where
For ten, for ten, I'm a cynical parcel, like Brady do, appears once every hundred years, I've missed. Um, no, I I think that, you know, there are a lot of things that would come into play, of course, knowing what the back to traffic, right? What roadways are already there? What is already built around this magical hypothetical parcel? Uh, what are the needs of the community at that time where it would rest and the projected needs moving forward, right? So if I was sitting here today and I'd say, well, you know, some sort of mixed use development project that incorporates service providers, housing, retail, um, entertainment would be lovely. But there are so many contingencies that that flow into that that that, you know, it's hard to say, right? But that that would be, those are the types of things you'd want to surface and say, what was needed? If the hypothetical parcel of land is across the way from a totally vacant commercial real estate property, then you probably aren't going to need those types of spaces because they're already available across the street. So um, those are things I've been looking at fully. Um, what types of housing are you building? You're building housing there. Are they intended to be or anticipated to be for those big families, children, not families with children, you know, fifty five and up community that gets placed there, you're not impacting the school community in the same way that you need to look at or assess otherwise. Um, so those are some of the things that I'm thinking about. One of the other things we mentioned thrive and it's, um, and I know that just saying the word, I don't say thrive anymore. It gets everybody up in in a titty, but um, you know, there are a lot of key parts of that that relate to how to better connect things that already exist. For example, libraries, rec centers, existing school communities, existing commercial areas, and how to make them better connected so that they're accessible one from the other and flow better as a community. So I think that, you know, again, I've added a hypothetical parcel of land to work with. I'd want to be looking at those things because I do think those are are good guidance um, pieces to work with. And thrive is just that. It is a guidance document. It's not approved yet. Um, it's not a law. It's not a statute, not even a regulation. It is a guidance document. So um, it it has a different significance than than something else.
Would you like to make this a question?
No. Um, in contrast to my opponent, uh, I don't, there's no fantasy world or land. Um, I'm against drive twenty fifty. When I write that, I will do anything in my power to uh, hold against it. Because I see it as a, as a Trojan horse for, for for the county and for the district. Without Trojan horse brings, there is a renewal. It brings the bill back better for us to the county. And what is this Trojan horse going to do? What is the objective of this Trojan horse? They're coming out, they're coming after the net class. They're coming out after small businesses and and home. People who own their homes, their residents, they want to get rid of them. They want to take, take their land, they want to take your home and they want to build high rises, mostly in the southern part of the district. That's what they want. So the council with this, with this plan, they want to, they want two classes, the original four. And um, again, they want to break away and challenge the middle class. And they're doing this under the guise of racial and economic equity, which is a total lie. Um. If if the council wanted to address racial and economic justice, why did they close uh, small and medium sized businesses during the pandemic? When those businesses are mostly owned by minorities. Some questions are asked, you saw. And for instance, I put this in my newsletter in the in the press release recently. So uh, the county wants to uh, do away with fossil fuels by twenty thirty five under the bill of thirteen dash point two. The one that they carbonize the county. But the county doesn't take into account that eighty percent of the uh, of that energy, of the sources for that energy comes from fossil fuels. And less than ten percent comes from renewable uh, sources. So how is this addressing carbon emissions? I should ask um, uh, the the audience and also the council. Into the audience, uh, if you're uh, at home watching this, ask yourself this. We are a carbon based uh, lifeblood. So keep that in mind. So um, with this, with this uh, thrive uh, twenty fifty, they want high, you know, high ride ghettos. They want to uh, provide loans to people who don't have credit. So we're going to relive the two thousand eight, two thousand nine financial crisis where we're going to see a bubble in real estate. And um, again, the the perception that the county uh, shows with these plans are overreaching and not presenting the real truth to the, the public in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is the fifth and the last joint question. Uh, District Seven is predominantly a residential area with some commercial development that is designed specifically to serve locally. People living locally. Hope I didn't sound too much. I'm saying we're predominantly residential, but commercial development designed to serve those living locally. Over the next four years, do you see any change in this? If so, what would be different? And if not, how would you support the current business community? Mr. Maldonado, go first.
Yeah, thank you. Um, well. Um, first of all, our economy is stagnant, is growing at two percent um, last ten years. Um, the, we're losing um, growth to our leadership, Fairfax, our family. Even DC, they're growing not four percent of the year. And what is the stagnation? We're under the stagnation. Low growth, high unemployment, that's what it means. So what is the foreseeable um, economic growth for for the uh, for the county in Pacific before this is so? District Southern is a green area, has an ax sector. And the county has ignored that sector and it's trying to do anything possible to dismantle small farmers. So on day one, again, I think I will uh, be able to focus my attention on sustainable growth in in the district. It doesn't mean bringing big box corporations. It means fostering and helping the growth of our small and medium sized businesses. Because those businesses are the ones that create the most jobs in the county. That's what we need, jobs. What what happens if we create a lot of jobs? We create a larger tax base. We want to make sure that uh, companies have incentives to come to uh, to to the county, especially Vision Seven. We want to revive uh, small businesses that have been closed during the pandemic. Lost forty thousand uh, jobs in the in the second quarter of two thousand twenty alone. Imagine how much we lost during the whole pandemic. Those jobs are not coming back. So again, we're talking about transportation, the bottlenecks. The first thing uh, we can do is address the economic issue and and improve the investment environment in the county in order for the county to start growing again beyond two percent. If we do that, without spending a nickel of dime in transportation, we can create the quality jobs in the county and for people can stay in the county and not uh, travel outside the county to create those bottlenecks. So by supporting the ax sectors, small businesses, we will um, revive the 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 economy. And um, basically, that that will be my plan and to create jobs locally and the ax sector and small businesses will be the 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 drivers of that.
Yes, you would like to remember the question?
No, okay, thank you. Uh, so it kind of depends on what we're thinking about. And and I'm happy that Mr. Maldonado mentioned that ag reserves, because in the residential, commercial piece, we didn't include agriculture and obviously the ag reserves is a huge piece, we didn't include agriculture and obviously the ag reserve is a huge part of, of this district. Um, and it's really critical to Montgomery County as a whole in terms of preserving it and the purpose for which it was set aside to begin with, which is unique and we should be incredibly proud of that. Um, you know, I think we do already serve outside of our community. I think we need to expand more of that, right? Um, I serve on the board at only, only theater and certainly we are not just a local. We are not a local theater. We're one of the two states designated, uh, official state theaters and we draw audiences from all over the region, uh, all over the whole DMV region to, to be fair. Um, that kind of a draw and that kind of a business also brings people to our restaurants and, and other, um, you go out for dinner before the show. So I think that, um, you know, we need to be more thoughtful about where our customers, clients, patients at Menster, Montgomery are coming from and how do we even attract them or to recognize this as a hub for those types of services? Because when you come for one thing, you go and you give them in the same area and that helps our businesses grow. Um, but overall, one of the things that I know is a priority for me um, is making sure government operations are better serving their customers, right? And the customers in this case, in this sample are more small businesses, medium sized businesses. Um, making sure that they're able to get what they need and making sure that, that what we have on the looks works. If it doesn't and it isn't appropriate economically, it's not working. Uh, it's not serving an intended purpose, adjust it, change it, right? Um, so for example, if you have, your licenses here are different, they're higher cost here than they are in the surrounding counties. Um, Frederick's is fifteen hundred. Howard's is a thousand, ours is twenty five hundred. It doesn't matter the size of the restaurant or facility. Right? Shouldn't it be timed so much to decide the business you may be expecting to have? A thirty top restaurant with, that has an alcohol license is going to have a different sales base than a hundred top big facility, right? So there are other types of, you know, more balanced or practical solutions that we could apply that make better sense for our business community. Um, and sitting with them and hearing what they need in order to help grow existing businesses as well as bringing in complementary things to help what we already have to help diversify our business space.
Mm-hmm. Oh, we're now going to ask questions specifically candidate who came in from the community or were based on things that were said on the website. Um, so some of us quoting your thoughts, so I'll give that to the audience. Um, Mr. Paul Nono, um, if you're elected or when you're elected in November, I think you'd rather be dead than say, yeah. And you are successful with all policies that you want to change. I would hope the population wouldn't increase in Montgomery County, because people would want to live here. Um, at that point, to accommodate growth, where would you want increased housing in District Seven? Um, or keep it more in the downtowny, more dense areas? And if you want more housing to be increased in District Seven to accommodate future growth, where would you put it?
Again, um, economic growth, for the sake of just economic growth is not, um, feasible without looking at, um, the, the areas of the sectors that it's going to change, it's going to affect. So when I, when I say there's going to be hopefully uh, sustainable growth in, in District Seven, I mean that the green areas are going to be respected. The ax sector is going to be respected. I mean that the ax sector is going to be the, the driver of that, of that economic recovery. And if we are, uh, if we allow more housing in those areas, it's going to change the charm of our district. It's going to change the, the optics that we have for, uh, our vision for economic growth in the, for, for the district. So I would, again, this is not, the, you know, if, if you were talking to the current council, they would say, you know, point blank, here's, here's our plan, take it or leave it. But take it because we have nine, nine versus zero vote all, all the time. So we're going to pass it. So my idea is to, again, talk to the stakeholders in the community. Would you allow, uh, as, as Doca, for example, would you allow an increase of, uh, a thousand, um, housing units in your area? Um, that would have to depend on, on, on the neighborhoods. That would have to depend on the, um, uh, small businesses and the shopping centers. Hey, if, if I'm a, an owner in a shopping center of, of a business, if I get more people to come into my store, that's great. But we have to look at being that as, as sustainable as we can in terms of protecting the green areas, protecting the neighborhoods, protecting the, the ax sector and not just point blank say, uh, we, we, we want housing to increase all over the district.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Lukey, Dave, this is for you. Because, um, there, there's a, a huge divide up county and down county with stormwater run. Uh, up county, uh, or down county has curbs and gutters and they stormwater runs in and all that's paid for with the taxes and the homeowner has no responsibility to cleaning out that even the big truck coming to clean out of the war based storms or the leaves don't block up, you know, back up the water. Now, up county, many houses were built a long time ago and we have these big steel tubes that go under our driveway in the, in the gutter for the stormwater run down the street into someplace else. And they're getting low, they're resting, they're collapsing and it is, um, quite clear, there's been groups within Doca has really looked at this issue. Those culverts, those tubes are really part of stormwater management that should be in the county's responsibility. But no matter how we address it, the homeowners are told that they're dying. They have to fix it themselves. Um, and it is quite unfair in our opinion because of the fear of a huge financial burden to fix this, which is clearly something that is county responsible. I kind of been thinking, it's, it's a lot of money to go and retrofit everybody's all the time, but, um, how as a council member, would you be able to work to correct this? Um, because this is a huge issue impacting our homes.
Absolutely. Um, and so sometimes there's a word I use, I use it on my website. I talk about resiliency planning or resiliency as a, as a climate change matter, right? Uh, because we, the climate has already changed. And so these events that you're talking about, and I don't even have those to, like, I don't, I don't have, I don't have that, um, where I live. Uh, these are more regular occurrences. And at the end of the day, the cost, if you want to look at it just from a purely economic standpoint, the cost of the cleanup, the cost of the damage that occurs, the cost, you know, and the potential human life costs and personal injury costs are significantly higher now than they once were. Um, and so I view this as part of that overall resiliency structure that needs to be adapted and changed as part of the county's overall climate and environmental strategy. Um, and there are additional problems that happen, not just the blockage and, um, things like that, but the side pieces of the roadway is particularly on these single lane, one way, each direction roads that do not have curbs, do not have sidewalks. The pavement will start to deteriorate right around the edges. Let's hear some of you drive on, some of these roads regularly around here where then they start, it starts to crumble and disintegrate off into the side and it causes other flooding damage and vehicle damage. Um, so there is a cost. It's, it's about selling that to my colleagues. Uh, certainly the state has ambitious climate control statute, the other climate change, climate solutions now app that was passed here in twenty twenty two. Um, that sets statewide metrics regardless of what was already passed within the county. So that's not negotiable and those are not a thing that, that can't be met. That's a state law that applies to everybody. And one of the council's jobs is to figure out how may that happen, right? Um, but we also have a, a new resiliency officer, uh, position that was created at the state that's within the Maryland Department of Emergency Management. And again, these strategies are something that are being talked about regionally, um, because when you talk about this kind of an issue, particularly we're talking about Brighton and, and Brookville, and then you're talking about Western Howard County. We're all connected and the large shit is connected and the issues are connected, right? And so working together, collaborating collaboratively with the emergency managers from those areas, with our emergency manager here in the county to talk about what is seen, um, when these events are happening and to talk to homeowners about the consequences. So, you know, it's not something that should always be borne by individual homeowners' property insurance policy. Um, when these are structural issues that need to be addressed comprehensively rather than one off by an individual homeowner if we are to find success in mitigating, um, that climate change issue.
I will say homeowners love it if they're structured.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, Mr. Paul Nono, on your website, uh, regarding education, um, and teachers, you, you, uh, have, well, I will work on reviving these contracts and eventually support nullifying them, use your contract to teach her. Uh, nullify them so that the Board of Education is free to make independent policy decisions along with the teacher that represents. Um, that was confusing for this person who wrote, uh, wrote this question is, and one, they want to know if you're both remove the teacher union? And if not, how would you revise the contracts since the Board of Education has the authority to negotiate with MCEA? Now that the county council, county council funds the schools if they don't, they're not involved in the contract negotiation.
Again, unlike my opponent, I live in reality. I live in, uh, reality where we see the unions and the county having a lot of power to decide everything from who you're going to vote for next, in the next elections, you know, how much the budget will be. And then, you know, who should get the budget? And if you, if you don't, if you're a teacher, if you don't follow our curriculum to, to the T, then you're going to get sanctioned or you're not going to get promoted, et cetera. So that's why I I mean to, uh, start working on the, on the contracts, the, the, the teachers have with the teacher unions. And of course, you, you mentioned correctly, the Board of Education had a lot of say in that. So I'm going to work with the Board of Education to, uh, nullify those contracts and pace out the teacher unions in, in schools. Because we need to bring back parents, we need to bring back teachers into the whole, into the discussion of um, how our kids should be taught. I want my, uh, fourth grader right now and uh, to be taught, uh, gender, uh, studies or gender, uh, uh, you know, sexualized education. Uh, that's completely up to the parents. And again, the unions are taking away, from the government, from the council, are taking away the rights of parents. And they're playing, for instance, during the pandemic, the, the county became an expert in, in medicine and health. When that, when that happened. And we, in February, they were doing, uh, the council was thinking about extending the mandates for masks for kids. And they didn't care anything about what parents said. And that's one of, one of the reasons why I decided to run is because the county is lost, they're drunk, um, unpowered, and we need to address it and we need to, um, bring the reality to what's going on in the council in schools with the teachers, with the parents being left out of, of the decision making about the core, the core values of what their kids should be taught. And I want to work on that and that's why.
And I also want to say, I had him said, you guys have one minute if you wanted to respond, but I think if you want to take notes and put it all in here, we'll give you a longer station to watch and address what's, what's asked one candidate or the other candidate as a comment. So we'll, we'll put that in there. Um, Ms. Lukey, on your website regarding safety, you state, quote, "All residents must feel safe and secure in the community and require a whole community approach to public safety, including cultural competency and providing services, community outreach and partnerships to build trust and ensure that the services provided by the county adequately meet community need." Um, could you please elaborate on this whole community approach and address what departments could be involved? Because the person who wrote this thought that I was interpreting it as, this is putting a lot more burden on MCPD, on police departments to, to, to bill. And so this whole community approach, elaborate.
It's short, uh, and, and thank you for the question. Um, full disclosure, I used to have a little hoteling station at MCPD in the Community Engagement Division. So, um, it is not that MCPD works in a vacuum. They don't. Uh, there are already existing partnerships. So our law enforcement officers, it depends on the community, but they may already have good relationships with their base, faith based community in that area, with other nonprofit partners in that area. And that's a lot about how we work on that whole community approach to public safety. Um, because you become a relied upon resource, a trusted resource. Uh, so within, you know, within the state, obviously the Police Accountability Act twenty twenty one has included implicit bias training for officers now. Um, I can say as a, as a certified instructor for the Maryland Police Standards Training Commission, that I've already been teaching implicit bias as one of the subjects I teach. Um, as a part of the School Resource Officer Curriculum that is mandated and was mandated back starting with the Safe to Learn Act of twenty eighteen. Um, so that program was originally a forty hour program. It's now a seventy hour program. And it's taught equally between our school resource officers and all school security leagues of the school systems across the state get the same, um, the same training. Um, so I feel like those kinds of things and not having law enforcement be there only in an emergency situation. Because you're going to know the community better when you're there as an integral part of the community in non-emergency situations. So that type of, um, one-on-one connection and partnerships with other departments within, within the executive agencies of the county to help figure out what needs are and how the best presses and how work collaboratively is going to, um, help overall increase safety. It helps to support our officers. So they're not just out there by themselves and they're not only there in an emergency. Um, and it overall increases positively.
On his well, Nono, we'll stick with, uh, police and safety. Uh, uh, for reference, the FBI reports an average of two point four sworn off police officers per one thousand resident. In suburban areas like Montgomery County, uh, the rate is, um, oh, that is sorry, the FBI reports in suburban areas, the average is two point four officers per one thousand resident. Montgomery County's rate is one point two, half of that. Um, on your website, you state that when elected, you would like to increase the ratio of police officers up to five per one thousand residents, uh, which is doubling the national average and quadrupling what we currently have. And you've already pointed out the vacancies we have, the, the lack of officers we have. Um, so there is a two parts to this question. How do you bring more people wanting to become police officers so that we can fill these agencies? And then two, uh, there's only one pot of money in the budget. If we're going to quadruple what goes to one department, what are we not funding then because monies, unless you're going to raise taxes, which I, I just kind of assume that's not on the table. So if you're going to quadruple the police department and quadruple the police force, what are, what's not going to, what's getting taken out to replace that money?
Uh, great question. So two parts, right?
Right, so.
So.
All the vacancies and then how to do that.
So by, first of all, the first thing I'll, I'll do, like, for an office, is commission this, this audit. And this audit will enable us in the council to cut unnecessary expenses. And I foresee, um, for instance, uh, using some of the funding, funding to be, uh, directed towards, uh, towards the police department and education in part, but in terms of getting more police officers, definitely remove the obstacles that the police officers have currently doing their, their job and, and working with with those police officers to, to make sure that they have our back. Uh, and, and we have the back. I support them a hundred percent. We need, um, SROs back in schools as well. So my opponent and, and the Democrat Party are, are keen in, in building fine the police departments all over the country and specifically in, in the county. And in terms of providing that extra, uh, you know, uh, police officer for a thousand, uh, that, that ratio, that's going to come as a result of the revival of the economy. I'm not, I'm not here to, uh, increase that in, in, in the council, which is, uh, the, the second lineup item in this year's budget. Don't know why they're mismanaging the money, but that's another story. But, um, that's, that's my, uh, thinking in terms of, um, the economic development and the growth of the economy, paying for that, for that increase in, in security and in public safety. From, uh, as you said, one point three to, uh, five point. Now, realistically, not every part of the, of the, of the county and the, the, in District Southern need to increase that, that ratio. Of course, certainly Montgomery Village, there was, uh, some shooting a couple of, uh, we- weekends ago. Uh, people are, residents are concerned. And my job is to make sure that the streets are safe and our police officers have the backing, both financially, morally, and otherwise in order for them to do their job.
Um, you'll notice, uh, Goka tends to be very focused on land use and transportation, because that's the need of what we deal with every day. Um, on this Luki, on your website regarding transportation, you said, uh, you state that little attention has been paid, especially on Division Zero, the idea of trying to get to no fatalities on, while you're in a car, on a bike, or walking along the street, um, as well as in general money for road improvements has been, um, has been really, none of those have really are directed towards District Seven and in more rural areas. What changes, um, do you think are needed in terms of for our transportation priorities? Where do you see our transportation priorities and our biggest safety issues?
Um, there are two that come to mind right away that I think about when I, when I wrote that. Um, one being the number of roadways that we have that don't have sidewalks or curbs. Where are the speed limit on the roads that are adjacent to those areas are particularly high? Right? Um, and some of those have bus stops along them, but bus stops are not what I would consider a bus stop. I'm sure it's probably not one you would want to stand and wait for a bus. It's not, there's zero shoulder, um, they're in Nebraska, there's no shelter. There's basically a sign telling you the bus is coming and you would not receive space to, to stand. Um, and, and certainly even where there are bus shelters, which we, um, I apologize for the shifting, kind of very heavy or defeated food on my legs though. While we watch each other every once in a while. Um, we've seen even where there are sidewalks or curbs, that we are still having issues with, um, with fatalities of, uh, pedestrians waiting across at a light and moving to press the traffic signal. And so looking again at what the speeds are versus posted speed versus traveled speed. Um, and using the, the county to do some engineering studies related to that. Uh, I know they're already, you know, in certain places doing that, but some to be done up here. Um, to determine what else might need to be done in terms of traffic calming measures to assist with reducing, uh, those problems in that area. That also impacts our school buses, our kids who are getting on our off-school buses and trying to walk back to their houses. Um, so beyond where they're just, um, waiting for, uh, of transit. Um, we also have a lot of gaps in our sidewalk infrastructure. So we have portions of the district, even, you know, obviously I'm not saying go all the way up to the county line, right? Um, but even just taking a snapshot of dealing with only in a central area, you'll see pieces of sidewalk that go and then stop. And then they pick up, but they're on the opposite side of the road and they go and they stop. Right? So we have a lot of paperwork to do in order to bring sidewalk infrastructure back here to, to fill in the gaps between what is already there. Um, again, that depends on whether it is a state road or a local road and how you have to work collaboratively with the State Department of Transportation, our County Department of Transportation. And of course, being able to make that ask of an analyst to fund, uh, those priorities. Because they're not all, all of them solely funded, um, heroes in county. We need to work collaboratively with them to make those improvements.
Uh, Mr. Malnado, on your website, the very first thing you see is, uh, you state, quote, "I am passionate and determined in returning the focus to the county council policies for safeguarding the sanctity of our family values and personal freedom." I'm going to give you an opportunity to describe the, your, the family values and personal freedoms you're referring to and what policies you might want to change in order to safeguard.
Yes. Oh, no, thank you for the question. So in the last, I live here since when the babies moved to, so spring and then moved to, um, Derryburg in 1995 into Baywood in 2010. So I've noticed the attack against a nuclear family, individuals, international family. And when I say I would defend the, and make family values the cornerstone of every county policy, that's what I mean. Every policy should be being, um, thinking about the families in the communities. The, the, if I want to invest money or allow companies to invest money in housing, I want that housing to be family-friendly, to have, for them to have parks. Is there a church nearby? Uh, you know, I work, work with, um, the stakeholders again to make sure that that message, uh, goes across in terms of not investing just for, for, for investment sake. Um, have the families in mind and have, um, return the family values to education. Um, education, I think, and in the last 30 years in the county has declined significantly. One of the main reasons why it has declined is because there's a shift away from, uh, teaching our kids family values in terms of there's a mom, there's a dad, and there's a family. And now we're talking about, there's, there are two dads, two moms, and whatever family. I have nothing against, uh, the gay community, I think, surviving community. But what about the family values? What about nuclear, uh, family values? That has been on attack for the last 10 years and more increasingly, uh, in the last five years. I don't want my, my fourth grader to go to a drag queen, uh, uh, reading story time. That's inappropriate. But the, the council and, and the Board of Education and the teacher unions support that. I'm against that a hundred percent. And what was your second, what was your second part of the question?
Uh, I just wanted to give you an opportunity to uh, describe the family values and if there's certain policies that you would specifically want to change, um, which is kind of a very specific question, like what, what policies might you want to change to safeguard family values?
Yeah, so revise the current curriculum in, in, in the normal county public school system and making sure that, uh, that's probably to family values.
Um, all right. Uh, next question, um, Ms. Luki. The energy tax, um, was instituted, I think, when I played at this county executive. It was sunset. Um, this is the tax we all pay on our capital. And it was not meant to be a permanent tax. Um, and every year it never goes away as it was promised. Um, and there, there's issues with that when you look at business development. This person wrote in to explain how in, um, Loudoun County has lots of commercial data centers. Why they use a lot of electricity? Why would they center their data center, which doesn't produce traffic or kids in school at the building with computers in it? Um, they're not going to come to Montgomery County because their electric bill will be a lot higher. Um, and so there's implications when this, this, this promised tax does not get funded. Um, and so the, the question is really, i- if you're on the council, would you be willing to make the council say this is a permanent tax or push to have it sunset and have it ended as it was promised many years ago?
So there's a couple of pieces to, to tackle within that. Um, you know, one, whether we have a tax that Virginia doesn't have, either at the county level or the state level, is one piece of the puzzle within the broader tax scheme, right, from the tax code. Um, so they may not have this one, but they may have something else that they, because at the end of the day, it's all about how are we making the budget? How are we coming to budget? How are we funding our priorities? Um, so again, as I said earlier, with respect to businesses and of course, there's some business component tied into this question about this data center in Loudoun County. Again, wanting to take a look at why particular taxes are on the book? What purpose are they serving? Are there consequences to those that are adverse to the interests of the county moving forward? What should we do to adjust that? What might make better sense? Right? So that should always be something, that should always be an evolving question and concern that any council member should have, because you are in fact the swords of the, the taxpayers' money and fiduciary duty to, to, to make the best out of, um, out of our, our revenue to serve, um, our population. So I can't say in a vacuum what I would or wouldn't do with respect to that without knowing a much broader piece of things. Um, but again, knowing that there are other pieces of this puzzle, particularly within the environmental and energy-related world, there's going to be a lot of change and a lot of shift in different directions, um, to achieve those other policy goals. Um, and this may not be one that stays, right? Uh, so it's not that it's absolute and not that it's going to be kicked out the door. It's a bigger, uh, more intensive question, um, that's codependent on a lot of factors that I want to, um, give an accurate answer and not stay any time.
Sounds good. Thank you. Um, that's actually going to end our question asking. Um, we're going to get four minutes for a wrap-up, because there did not give you an opportunity to, to respond to the individual questions to the other candidate. Um, we covered a lot of things, taxes, budgets, priorities, police funding, transportation, sidewalks, land use, housing roads, one-lane roads, culverts, uh, groundwater management. So I think we covered a lot of different issues, but I know we didn't cover it all. Um, so, you know, don't run away, because I'm sure these guys aren't going to disappear after our meeting. Um, and so, Ms. Malnado, we'll start with you. Of course, uh, um, to, if you want to address any of the things we talked about, or just have a, a wrap-up. Stay at the times.
Thank you. Again, uh, thank you, uh, everybody for coming tonight. Thank you, uh, Goka for organizing this. It's a pleasure to be talking to the actual stakeholders of the community itself. Thank you again. Um, you have a simple choice. Your choice is very easy. If you want things to continue to be the way they are, rising crime, rising costs, rising property taxes, rising pro- uh, corporate taxes, and the county not being able to create quality jobs for every part of the community. Keep voting Democrat. Keep voting for my opponent. But I have, if you want to change and if you want accountability, you want to start fixing all the issues that I pointed out tonight. Of course, and Goka is right, there are a lot of many issues, little, small issues, as, as my opponent has also described. But we need accountability in the council. The council, again, is drunk on power. And if they went in November, all bets are off. Businesses are, will continue to leave. Residents will continue to leave. Our, our, our brain drain will be higher. So we're not going to have the IQ in the county in order for the county known to be very business-friendly in terms of, uh, people opening businesses here and there. That ingenuity will cease to exist. And if we don't make a change in November, education will be lost. Our math scores, reading scores, and in science and math, and the quality of our graduates will continue to decline. What does that do to the labor force or our economy? Right now, I talk to, uh, private sector, uh, business owners, and they are concerned because they can't find labor, quality labor. What does that do to our, to our economy? We need to think really hard, because I want to return common sense to the council. I want to, uh, create a counterbalance in, in the council. I have a different opinion. Up to this point, they've had carte blanche to determine every policy at their whim. They're pushing, um, Eldridge, uh, in, in the Pulseville Parade recently was driving a electric car. The average income in Montgomery County is less than $50,000. And he's saying all residents should consider buying an electric car, which averages around $80,000. I think the council is drunk on, on power again. And we need accountability, we need integrity, we need objectivity. And I'm the candidate for that. Uh, again, thank you, Goka. I can visit, uh, my website, haroldmaldonado.com. You and I together, let's look at our county that. Thank you.
Good Luki. Yes, thank you for having us again and for everyone who checked out tonight. Um, you know, I, I've come up now in 22 years it's been since I took my first oath getting sworn into the bar, right? And as a part of that oath, by the way, I've taken that oath in Maryland, Massachusetts, Pennsylvania, the District of Columbia, and the District of Pennsylvania, and the United States District for the District of Maryland. At all times, my oath was to uphold and affirm the laws of the United States, the Constitution as the supreme law of the land. Um, the laws and government of the United States as the supreme law of the land. Um, any law of the state or global government, to the contrary notwithstanding, that guides my principles. It always has. I also fully understand the role of the council. And I understand that while we fund the school system, we do not, we are not Maryland State Department of Education, which sets curriculum standards, which sets teacher certification, which sets all the requirements that my opponent discussed here, that he said he would love to change. Those are set at the state level. That is not even within the control of the local board of education. There are other matters which are within the control of the local board of education, but we are not running for the board of education. Um, my opponent said that I vilified police officers. And, and I am incredibly proud of the relationship that I do have with law enforcement from Garrett County to Somerset. And I am proud of the relationships that I have with our emergency ma- managers across the state from Garrett County to Somerset. I'm chairing a conference on Friday at the state level for our state act of assailant interdisciplinary work group. And we have over 300 people coming from state, federal, and municipal governments to come to that conference. That work is dear and dear to my heart. I do understand what they do day in, day out. And I think that they would advise you that I do, I'm a good listener, and they respect the work that I do give them and for them and in support of them. Um, I, I, I think that we are in a place where a lot of our choices come down to this. There are different ways to solve problems. There are a lot of different ways to solve problems. I bring a very positive attitude towards problem solving, meaning I am not under any belief that anything's simple or easy. Um, not by a long shot, right? Some of the days are incredibly, incredibly long and incredibly hard. But I've been in public service already for nine years. I understand what I'm getting into. I am not looking at this with blinders on. I want to continue the work that I've already been doing and do it in a fully pos- policy fashion, um, in the legislative branch of our county's government and take what I've been able to do and grow and know and develop across the state in the past nine years and bring it back home locally to serve our residents. Because you haven't had that voice, you haven't had an advocate. You all deserve an advocate. You deserve someone who's going to listen to you, but who also fully understands the whole structure within which this works or doesn't work at times. And how would you go about fixing them? Right? Um, that is what I bring to the table. That is what I want to bring to you, to all of you, um, and to all parts of District Seven. This is an incredibly diverse district with rural, semi-urban, and suburban parts. And it all needs to be represented equally and thoroughly. And every member of the community, regardless of their race, religion, economic status, their socioeconomic background, their gender, their gender identity, even homelessness, religion. These are all protected classes under our state law, and they're all things that we need to be taking into consideration. It is not a choice between family values and someone else's values. It's the people's values. Thank you for having me. And everyone, that concludes today's session. I do want to thank, um, Ms. Luki, Mr. Malnado for your time. Bill Bobber and I, as well as the Goka officers, everyone who helped with this organization. Again, we thank everyone for their participation tonight. Uh, everyone has one more thing to do, and that is to know the early voting starts from October 27th. It goes to November 7th, um, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And the closest heights to here are the Sandy Spring Bonneville Fire Station and the Rural Drive Community Renovation Center. Uh, if you want to wait till election day, that is November 8th, and that's where you can vote where your assigned kids. Um, and if you want to consider mail-in ballots, the deadline to request your mail-in ballot is Tuesday, November 1st. These ballots are postpaid, postage paid, and can be mailed or deposited to any of the election boxes that will be in our community. Um, where have I? If you need, okay. If you need it, um, if you need to register to vote, if you need to update any of your registration information or to verify your registration, uh, the Montgomery County Board, uh, Montgomery County Board of Elections website has all that information for you. Easy to find. So there's many, many ways to vote. So please make sure you get it done. Encourage your friends, families, and neighbors to vote this year. Um, Ms. Luki and Mr. Malnado will be available after the meeting today. So if you have any questions, maybe I then will happily answer for you. Okay. Oh, one more, what's the saying, closing? Yeah, I've been, again, I would have been back then for you to organize it for this and for mutual aid for helping and all the good officers and help pull this off. Um, informative for everyone. And I like how what she said, this is the year everybody's gotta vote, so hope it's an opportunity. Very, um, um, I think, well, this was table till next month, so, um, thank you all for coming. And I especially want to thank you for, uh, Brian's face marks. Nine minutes early. Kind of reputation.